Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeGore.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hages.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Teelander.
Here.
And Mayor Althoff.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Your approval in a second. Call in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes from the preceding regular meeting on March 21st, 2016?
I'll move we approve that as presented.
I'll second the motion. It's been approved in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And approval of the work session meeting for March 21st, 2016?
I'll move we approve that as presented.
I'll second that.
Been approved in seconded. Roll call vote?
Councilmember DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althoff?
Yes. Approval of the accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable to Catherine Henry.
Is that what we're doing? Yeah. If you want to do that.
You're talking about then all the accounts?
We're gonna do the Catherine Henry first.
First, okay.
And I'll second that. Discussion?
I would just say that we've had, we've discussed this before, there seems to be some discrepancy about what to pay her and while we did receive a letter from Dick Watt indicating that his opinion on the matter, that he stipulated that it be to the satisfaction of council of this council member, the reason is not so satisfied with her work prior to January 15th, I would suggest that we strike those 18 hours and pay her for 31 hours and a half, 31.5, at $100, at $3,150, and I'd make that motion.
I'll disagree with you on that because...
You need a second, sir.
What?
You need a second to the motion before you can...
Because your first, it was the first motion.
It was the first, we're on discussion, we're on a motion.
Alright, I stand corrected. I apologize.
Thank you, you're welcome. We hired her at $200 an hour. There was a discussion that if she was going to work for us full-time like Dick Watt was, that she would lower rates. Basically, that's what she said, but she was hired for one purpose and one purpose only, and that was what she helped us do. So, I didn't hire her myself, there was a group of us that did. She fulfills her word to my pleasure, and I think she should be paid.
Yeah, we hired her, we had a, was it a four to one vote?
Yes.
Four to one vote, we discussed the $200 figure, we never changed that when we voted. Prior to the 18th, every attorney does due diligence work up, she had to study the city charter to make sure she knew what she was talking about, we need to give her that right. We need to pay her, we need to get this off our table, we just need to get this done, the city will move forward once this is done.
So, if I may ask, then, so it's okay for somebody to do work prior to when they're going to be paid, and it's okay for them to bill us for work prior to them being approved to be paid?
Have you ever worked as an attorney?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so there's a certain amount of due diligence that an attorney has to do.
I've done some work as a contractor, helping people out and making estimates, and I was never paid for doing estimates or scoping out the work, seeing what needed to be done, but certainly that's different than being an attorney, but it just doesn't seem ethical. It may be legal, but it doesn't seem to me to be ethical to be engaged before I'm employed. And I think there might have been time for her to come, to have come up to speed after becoming employed unless there was some rush to get this dirty deed done on the 19th of January.
Yeah, I have a pretty big issue with everything before she was officially hired as well, I think the $200 an hour is gonna be what it is, but I have a, it says right in the email from Dick, work performed sufficiently detailed, I know that we had some questions on the invoice, that she could have came here and answered, and she'd have come here. So, I have a problem with everything before her official hire date.
We need to get past this, we need to pay her, we need to move on, we need to figure out what that amount is, or what those hours are, and it needs to be done, as far as I'm concerned, tonight, the sooner we get this done, the better it is for our community.
I don't question that we need to get past this, nor that, you know, we come to some agreement tonight, but on the other hand, I think that this work done prior to the 19th doesn't sit well in my mind, I think it's unethical, I think she could have been and should have as, well, actually, yes she was, she was hired on the 19th, then she could have begun her work, and the city charter is certainly something that is out there online, many people read the city charter, they're not paid to do that, they've spent time doing that, they never received any money for doing that, that particular study or reading. But anyway, we'll just disagree on this, I don't think that she should be paid for those 18 hours prior to the 19th, but there was plenty of time following the 19th to do her work, and the whole process could have taken place over the next several weeks in a much different way, but that's water over the darn dam, and that's just the way things happen and the necessity to make things happen so, so fast that leaves suspicion and a question in my mind as far as ethics.
Well, I talked with Dick quite a bit about this, and he didn't have a problem, as a matter of fact, he wrote us a letter to tell us he could do it, and I think we should just pay her.
What Dick did say was...
For service rent, yes.
What Dick did say was that whatever the council decides to do is perfectly fine, because this body has that right, but I would just say that I also have the right to question those hours, to find that that's not satisfactory in my mind, and that's what Dick says, whatever's satisfactory in the eyes of the council, this council member is not satisfied.
She did absolutely everything we asked of her, nothing more, she did not dictate what we were doing, she just gave us counsel on how to do it, I find no fault in anything that she did, and she's much maligned out on the internet right now, I don't know why, because she never did any more than we asked her to do.
And I have to, he'd regret this if I didn't ask, so she did everything that she was asked to do prior to being asked to do it.
Okay. Well, there's a motion out there, isn't there?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes.
And we've had our discussion, do we take it to a vote? The motion was to pay her in full?
Yes.
If you wanted, you might consider...
Sure, sure, I'm sorry, Perry.
I agree that the city needs to move forward, the concern that I have is, at the time that she was hired on January 19th, I had mentioned, came up and spoke about getting other quotes, getting bids processed, and the council opted not to do that, you know, at the time, I said, you know, it's $200 an hour, it's gonna, it's gonna run up into many thousands of dollars, et cetera, at the time. What I have a, and then Catherine Henry got up here and said, if it's the money, and she looked at the citizens, if it's the money you're concerned about, I will do it for 150, she then said, I'd even do it for 100, and that wasn't to say whether she was full-time, partial-time, that's what she said when she stood here. My concern, then, if you're paying her before she was hired, and she did due diligence work before that, then obviously the council, one, two, all of you, or whatever, either met with her, contacted her, because she wouldn't start this process unless, unless there was some kind of contact from Jeff, as being the mayor, or whatever, and again, it, I think you need to pay her, but, and again, if that's what you agreed, fine, $200 an hour, but I truly think that the times before January 19th, those hours, I believe, shouldn't be paid, as other people have come up here through the weeks, they've stated that, you know, you're working with our dollars, not just mine, but the taxpayers, and if somebody comes up and says, I would do it for 100, I don't know where, it's just frustrating, and it's frustrating to think that you would pay somebody before they're officially hired, and if not, you technically, in the layman's eyes, you hired her long before the January 19th, if she's billing you for those hours. Thank you.
Well, as you all remember, we actually, we did try to hire her on the first of the month, at the first of the month, and because we can't have meetings, or we're not supposed to have meetings, and we can't discuss something, some things, it was hard to talk with the other council members, and Jeff Phillips had questions, Mike DeGore had questions, and actually, on the first of January, or the first meeting of January, when we tried to hire her, the intention of hiring her that night was to give Mark Howell 45 days off without pay, and that is something that Alan Teelander and I had discussed, because of him being so rude to us on January 23rd.
December 23rd.
Or December 23rd, and that was the reason that we were sort of trying to speed up the hiring her, and then after his attitude after that, that's when the other council members talked with her more, I think all of us did.
I did not.
Well, you had the choice.
I did not.
But you could have.
I did not.
Well, that's good that you didn't, because you won't have to be included in it, but she did do...
I was never contacted by her, or you, or anyone, in having a conversation.
Well, that's because you were having so much conversation with Mr. Howell that I didn't want to include you.
I sat down with you at Sneakers and talked to you about this.
Yes, he did, so, yeah, so anyways, the motion is out there, any input at all, Jeff?
Yeah, you know, I just, I respect what Dick says, and you know what, through this entire process, we want to do what's right for the community and the citizens, okay? That's why we're all here. I just want to do what's right for the community and move forward together, we need to move forward together, okay? We can't do it individually, but we can do it together, and I know a lot of people right now are just saying, let's get this done, let's move forward, and let's continue to build this team together, and that's what I want to do, I want to move forward, and I want to do what's right.
Did you want to, I thought you were willing to, okay, we have a motion and a second, to pay Catherine in full, roll call vote?
Councilmember Hages?
No.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
And Councilmember DeGore?
No.
Motion carried.
At up to $9,900?
Yes, the total bill. Will be non to accounts payable?
I have motion that we approve the accounts payable as presented to us?
I'd second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Roll call?
Oh, roll call, sorry about that.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Citizens' discussion for items not on the agenda?
Roger Luer, 681 Virgins Court, Lowell, I'm glad that we have, as you say, put this behind us, I'm hoping that this is not a precursor to how this council is going to be acting in the future, and I hope we can learn some things from this, I appreciate those of you who have spoken and lifted up for us, the fact that there is a real ethical issue here that had been ignored, and I, and as I thought about this, it seems to me that if the council, and Jeff, you were talking about working together, if the council is not going to work together on the people that they engage, for whatever purposes they engage them, if you're not willing to do that with complete transparency with each other, it seems very unusual, or very unlikely, I should say, that you're going to be totally transparent with us, who are also the citizens, who are paying the bill, which has now climbed to about $75,000 because of this whole issue that, and the way it has come down. I'm quite concerned about that, and I, I'm continuing, I want to be able to continue to meet with each of you in trying to work towards you working together, but I think it says very, very definitely that when anybody speaks on behalf of the whole of the council in hiring someone, and then is not willing to go with the contract, because our charter says that each contract is reviewed by our attorney, and we would have been able to catch a number of things here had there been a contract, and that would have been reviewed, and so I would encourage you as mayor, Jeff, and the rest of you as council, to perhaps, the best we can gain from this is to learn that this is not anything we ever want to see happen again. I appreciate those of you who have spoken out on this, and I appreciate the, for the, one of the first times that we've really heard different people discussing on this, and I think that's important that we continue to do that, and I want to encourage you in that, and I want us to try to do, as we move forward, the work that needs to be done with a council that is truly acting as a council on behalf of those of us who are citizens of this fine community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Roger Morgan, I'm the CEO of Rockford Ambulance, in my part-time, I'm county commissioner representing the 3rd district up in Rockford, and I'm the chair of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport, I wanted to come to the council tonight to give you a brief summary of the ambulance activity in 2015, and I just wanted to report that we had 1,479 responses for our area, which is the city of Lowell, Virgin and Lowell Township, and in the city of Lowell, we had 652 responses, we had 254 med-1s, which are life-threatening responses, we had a response time of six minutes and 52 seconds, and our required response time by KMS, Kent County Emergency Medical Services, is 12 minutes, we had 87 med-2s, and med-2s are potentially life-threatening, and we had a response time of seven minutes and 43 seconds, and our requirement is 20 minutes, and we had 311 med-3s, and we had nine minutes and one second on those, and our requirement is 25 minutes. So, pretty busy year down here in Lowell, this year we're going to be approaching the Lowell Area Community Foundation for a new ambulance, because we have van ambulances, the typical van, and they're requiring so much equipment now for us to carry that we can't fit them into the van anymore, and so, in order to have patient comfort and safety of the patient compartment, we're going back to the modular, which Chris remembers the modular, you worked for me 21 years ago, so, we're going back, and I've been to Lowell Township in Virgin, and asked for letters of support, we'd like to seek a matching grant for this ambulance, to service the Lowell area, we've received letters of support from Virgin's township, Lowell Township, and I would like to see if David could write a letter of support for us as we pursue the grant. David was instrumental in starting the ambulance, or bringing the ambulance down to Lowell in 1988.
Long time.
Just like yesterday. Is there any questions? I think my five minutes are close to being up.
Thank you, thank you for your service to our community, I almost used you guys last Thursday night, Dr. Holger pretty much saved my wife's life, so, thank you.
Can you go over the posting plan that you use? Because I get a lot of people that ask me why there's not, they're not there 24 hours a day.
Well, we have a posting plan, now, we have a station in Lowell, and we have a part-time station in Braden, and then we're up in Rockford, when a Lowell truck goes out, we'll bring a truck down from Rockford to cover Lowell, when you're doing this kind of business, you have to move your trucks around, and what we've invested in, we try to stay in the Lowell area as much as we can, that's why our response times are pretty decent, we've just invested in a program called ProQA, where you can actually, it'll actually predict where your next call is coming from, we cover 21 townships in Kent County, and this program, through our dispatch, will actually, it gets upgraded every 15 or 20 minutes, and it will predict where the next call is going to be generated out of those 21 townships. Now, we have six ambulances on a times to cover those 21 townships, but we have to move them around, and we are a 911 business here, we do a lot of 911 work, which is the top level, it's the most expensive, with that, sometimes I have five ambulances sitting at their station, doing absolutely nothing, the next minute, I may need 10 ambulances, that's just the nature of the business, so what we try to do is move our trucks around to cover the area, and as you can see, with our requirements, we're meeting those requirements.
You guys don't use ProQA right now?
Yes.
Do you two to prioritize?
Yeah.
Wish it worked for the stock market.
Well, it's about 87% accurate.
It sounds pretty awesome.
It is, you got a factor in on if your coverage area changes, you pick up a new township, those numbers are shot, and then you're starting back at square one.
But then they work out the formula?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you again, Harry, for your being here for us.
Good night, Herb.
Good night.
Really isn't anything new to report in M U P's?
Okay.
If I can, yeah, council training, information, Parks Department is April 19th, we're looking for all the council to attend, similar to what we did with Light and Power.
We're reading here.
That one is here.
Yep, 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock. Yeah, and I put it in the...
Yes, yep.
Yes, okay.
Going back to old business, what about employee training? Have we, we talked about that last year, have you got anything slated? I mean, you know, are they doing any monthly training, or any training at all?
Not at this point, we haven't put, we haven't put a detailed plan together yet, we've started, we've looked at it, we have not started a detailed plan.
I think we need to...
I agree.
Prioritize that.
I agree.
I think, I think that it's really important, and I'm pretty sure that there might be a little mandatory thing on that.
There are some mandatory requirements.
Yes, and so basically, we're a little...
We have, we have kept a hike for a while now.
Okay, alright, thank you. New business?
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Scott Boyer, Scott, just stand up. As everyone knows, Ron Woods has been our interim public works director for nearly a year, he's done a terrific job, I just really appreciate everything that Ron has done, but in the meantime, we need to have somebody on a long-term basis, and I think Ron is ready for retirement. I'd like to tell you that what we did is, we advertised and received 11 resumes for this position, we interviewed five by a committee composed of Ron Woods, Parks and Streets and Cities Supervisor Scott Fosberg, City Clerk Sue Allery, City Treasurer Sue Owen, Police Chief Steve Duclin, Consulting Engineer and City Resident Dave Austin, and myself. It was the unanimous chosen of the committee that Scott Boyer of Eaton Rapids be selected as Public Works Director, he has nearly 16 years of utility director, city superintendent experience for Eaton Rapids, Boyer has managed the day-to-day operations of all areas of electric distribution, which Steve, I think you ought to find interesting with his background, I know that Greg Pearson knows you very well, and water distribution, fleet operations, street maintenance, budget preparation, and administration, union contract negotiation, IT system maintenance, as well as economic development assistance for commercial and industrial customers. Scott has received an associate and bachelor's degrees from Fair State University, he will start this coming Monday, and Scott is married to Cam, which, wish that she could be here, but hopefully we'll see her shortly, and Scott has two children, Mitchell and Alyssa, and is planning to be at the meeting, which you see him right now, so again, we're introducing Scott. Just...
I love you both.
Thank you.
Welcome.
A and B.
Brian Belmont is here from Bryan and Newhoff, and wish to give us an update on the lift station work, and then also having more precise figures for engineering of these lift stations. So, Brian, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, Brian Belmont with Bryan and Newhoff. Appreciate the time to speak to Council about this. We had, at a previous meeting, we discussed the options that were reviewed for all the infrastructure, and appreciate your time in reviewing that. This is really the final proposals for design work to start that on both the Valley Vista Lift Station, which needs that replacement, and also work on the main lift station, including the connecting sewer and all the connections that need to be made to push the existing sewers back into that new trunk sewer that would go across the fairgrounds. In addition to that, I guess as part of it, we're going to be looking at railroad crossings as well. There are a couple railroad crosses for the sewer that are part of this that we want to look into and continue the process that was started a couple of years ago, actually, getting some permitting together for the railroads. Those usually take a long time. Those can take anywhere from 6 to 8 months often, because the railroad doesn't move all that quickly, so this will be part of that process as well. So we're just asking at this point to be able to move forward with those designs so we can get those projects moving as was discussed before.
So basically, what you're seeing, this is part of the big lift, lift station project?
Yes, both for the Valley Vista and for the main lift station.
Okay, it's, they're both, okay.
Correct.
Because we were trying to sort of figure out why we didn't go up to bid. I was, so, but now I understand.
And what this will do is this will prepare, have the survey, the geotechnical work all done, figure out what the soils are, what the groundwater's like, get the plans all prepared with drawings and specifications, and then we will actually prepare to go out for bids.
This is for the engineering?
This is just for the.
Design, yeah.
Okay.
And the work will be going up for bid?
That, now, 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 turns it up to 12.
Okay.
So, that was a little confused, but I was sick last week, so.
Sorry about that. I should have explained it as well.
Any more questions?
So you're looking for a motion?
Are we looking for a motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
All right, I'll whack away on here. It says, "The City Council Moves to Approve Engineering Services Involving Replacement of the Main Lift Station and Gravity Sanitary Sewer Connection Not to Exceed $59,000 for Design and Not to Exceed $54,700 for Construction Services and a Cost Not to Exceed $39,400 for Services Involving the Replacement of the Valley Vista Lift Station Replacement from the Wastewater Fund."
I'll stop.
Those are the numbers that we've.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Art E. Moore?
We have Dave Austin here to give us an update.
Hi, Dave Austin Williamson Works. If it's snowing out, it must be spring, and construction is starting. I wanted to just take the opportunity to let Council and the public know that we did officially start 2 portions of the spring projects today. The first portion is on East Main Street between Grove and James Street, installing water main in the north parking lane there. So as you're coming from Saranac or you're heading east towards Ionia, you're going to see the cones out there that's restricting traffic down to 1 lane in each direction. Weather pending, we hope that that's only going to be like that for about a week to 10 days at the most. Asphalt plants have not opened yet, so we may have a gravel surface there for a few days and maybe a patch. And again, we're required to patch the road, even though MDOT's coming and resurfacing. They would not give up on that, so they want us to patch it back up, and then they're going to come and smooth it over later in May. The second component that started today is on Riverside Drive from Main Street up to the city parking lot, just south of Mayor Althoff's business at the Backwater. And what we're doing there is replacing an existing sanitary sewer that is under capacity, and businesses have experienced backups there. So it's about 100 feet of sewer that we're replacing and putting a couple new manholes in. So Riverside is closed from Main Street to the parking lot right now. So in order to have breakfast at 5:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., whenever Mr. Althoff has that open, you're going to have to go around the back way in order to get to that parking lot.
You know, they have Mike Springer's business too.
As well. We talked to Dr. Reagan and Mr. Springer, that you're not going to be able to park in that short section in that diagonal parking for a few days. Again, weather pending, we're hoping that that will be done within weeks' time. The other 2 components of the project, the next thing that's going to start next Monday is the work here on Monroe Avenue in Avery. And at that time, we're going to be closing Monroe. You will not be able to come up Monroe initially, and so access to that parking lot that serves sneakers and Flatiron Grill, the beer store, et cetera, you're going to have to access that by going up some of our north-south streets, Washington Jefferson, et cetera, and come over on High Street, for instance, back down by the library into the parking lot. We've handed out flyers to the businesses and residents in the area. If you get any complaints as Council members, please get ahold of myself or Ron, and we'll make sure that folks get proper directions. But I want to make the public know that we're leaving this parking lot accessible at all times. As the work progresses up Monroe, we're going to open up this portion so that you can access the businesses from the alley, and then we'll focus on the intersection. That work is probably going to take a total of about 3 to 4 weeks, again, weather pending. So I encourage everyone to speak up if there's concerns, and we appreciate everyone's patience. When we're done, we're going to have a better water service and certainly smoother road. The last component, which is the work on the parking lot area behind the new barbecue, is not kicked off yet. That'll take place after we get these projects under way. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. A and D, the Rotary Agreement.
We've had an agreement with the Lowell Rotary Club for over 10 years, utilizing the city council chambers and adjoining rooms. The proposal is, is that we maintain a rental charge of $75 per meeting, and that it be extended 3 years. And the Rotary Club agreed to it, obviously subject to your approval, and it's recommended that this be approved.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll make the motion that the City Council moves to approve a 3-year lease agreement with the Lowell Rotary Club for usage of the chambers and adjoining storage area that costs $75 per meeting.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Rotary. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Duvor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Althoff?
Yes.
Motion carried. Board information reports. Would you like to go first, Jim?
Oh, sure. Arbor Board will meet Monday at high noon. Arbor Day is April 22nd, but the tree planting, celebrating Arbor Day will be held on Monday, April 25th at high noon. Harvest Health Foods, let me get my numbers right here, 865 West Main Street, we used to know that as JRB, northeast corner of Center and Main Street. We're going to have a tree planting ceremony there on Monday, April 25th. Flood Memorial applications are due 4:00 p.m. on April 29th. Thank you.
The Lowell Downtown Historic District Commission awarded replacement of 17 second-story windows at 221, 223 West Main Street to all-weather seal. 221, 223 West Main painting and roof extension has been given to 61, 2016 on this project. 106 West Main structural repair and debt, the deadline for that project is 5:15. And 219 East Main door replacement, and the project deadline is 4:15. And that's it. And then the next meeting would be the 26th of this month at 6 o'clock.
Next Monday, we have a Planning Commission meeting. If you have any input or thoughts on the flood plan, and you can see it on the map over there, Greenwich Gravel wants to put in a mining effort into their property down at the end of Bowes behind, not quite two, but behind the Walgreens store. And there's talk of rezoning a little bit along the river, going from that area all the way, all the way over to near McCalls on Grand River. Jim Fowler had some concerns about the rezoning, and maybe Mark and Teresa, you might have some concerns too. I would encourage you to come to the meeting on Monday night. I feel a little apathy, but it's something that I want you guys to know about, so if the newspaper could maybe put a little blurb in there about this meeting and the flood plan and rezoning, I would love to hear the input of the citizens that are impacted by that change.
April 13th, LARA, and April 19th, Parks and Rec, vote at 6 o'clock.
And this is the, let me see your thing here. This is the hard part of the month for me, because I change back and forth. I have a Fire Authority Board meeting on the 11th, and we're getting close to looking at applications for a new fire chief. We've had a few come in. Airport meeting, Board meeting is on the 13th at 7:00. A new, a new airport FBO should be starting to move in by then.
Larry Bauer.
Larry Bauer. And I've turned my Lowell Light and Power Board over to Alan, because I have too much going on right now to be able to make so many meetings. And that's all I have for the boards tonight. Managers report.
There's no appointments then, I would assume?
No, I think you guys did that.
Are you all set for appointments? I think you are.
Yeah, they did it last. Yeah, they did it last.
Okay.
No vacancies, I think, right?
I think we're all set, which is good. Tomorrow, the City Council is meeting with the Michigan Municipal League regarding a community profile meeting, which is helping in the executive search for a new manager. It'll be from 7 to 9, probably in the smaller room. And then next week, on Tuesday, the 12th, the league is going to be meeting with staff, and then in the evening with the community leaders. And so, we're all set there. The Michigan Department of Transportation has requested that I be appointed an interim street administrator, and so I'd be asking for a motion to that effect.
I make that motion?
I'd second.
On the favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. As was mentioned, the Parks Recreation Commission has requested a joint work session with the Helwood Council. I think you were looking at Tuesday, the 19th? Barry, is that correct? At 6 o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, in the conference room? In the conference room. And that's all I have.
I do have a couple questions. We did receive the funding for the sidewalks, correct?
That's correct.
Did you, were you guys able to break that down with DDA area and all that yet?
I think all of that, that money has been allocated, has it not?
Well, we have, this is, that's the LC TV fund. All the red sidewalks were noted and will be covered under these monies. And so they've been identified, is my understanding.
Yeah, but, but, the.
Are you looking at some that are within the DDA as well?
Right, right, because.
That'll be handled differently.
We could handle that different, and there would be some extra money, because I actually found some on Main Street this week, but I think that, that actually MDOT will pay for them, because I think the crew that worked at the light last, when they were doing the lights last summer on Valley Vista, I think they damaged the showboat automotives.
Okay, I don't know where the intersections.
Yeah, right. I think they were, when they parked on them, I think they, they poured new sidewalk, but the old sidewalk is off, so.
Just make sure that we have all the addresses.
Yeah, but when do you, when do you plan on inspecting this year?
I don't think we decided a date yet.
Because, just, you know, because if we did, you know, if we were able, that's why I wanted to find out about the DDA money, because if we were able to locate some more that were red that needed to be done, and we could take some, if there was some on there that were red that were in the DDA, you know.
In addition to what we had learned last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that way we could, maybe we could take care of some more, you know, some more.
I could have Scott walk that again this week, just to make sure that we've done them all.
Yeah, because there's, there's not very many, but I don't know if we will be able to continue this, but, and this isn't a full funding deal either, is it?
It's a 70%, 70% city, 30% property.
Yeah. And that's all I have? Thank you. Comments? Jeff?
I would just like to say, welcome, Scott, and look forward to working with you.
Yes, welcome, Scott. I look forward to working with you too. Lot to be done, and you have a big job that I'm sure you'll do well. There's a Light and Power Board meeting on Thursday night at 6 o'clock at the Light and Power Building, if anybody wants to attend. And remember, I keep saying it, turn in your incandescent light bulbs, and you'll get free 5 of them. You hop to 5, you can get free LED bulbs in exchange for those incandescents. Is that changing?
It's not this Thursday, right?
It's not this Thursday? Oh, I stand corrected, it's the 14th. I'm just excited about being on the board.
Second Thursday of the month.
Okay, okay, thank you, Barry. Oh, thank you. The expo went very well, thousands and thousands, once you wrote about that in the Lowell Ledger anyway. It was a tremendous success, and lots of, got all the refrigerator baguettes that you'd ever need, and ink pens and scratch pads, and plenty of things to see and do. Also, the city newsletter was in our water bill. Thanks for the water bill. But anyway, the newsletter's always well, well to be read, so congratulations on Dave Pasquale, nice picture. Anyway.
Thank you.
As well as a little piece about making sure your dogs and cats do what they're supposed to do as they're supposed to do them. And congratulations again, Scott. Has nothing to do with the dogs and cats.
Welcome, Scott. Thank you, Ron. That's all I got.
And welcome, Scott, and thank you, Ron. Have fun on your boat, and I think your wife will too. And that's all I have for the night. And then that?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 7:50.
Second.
Home favor?
Yes.